...of the committee at the whole Rainier Community Building Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Person would be the pledger.
My pledge is to do the right and right of the state of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Got a second or a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
To approve, recommend approval of the minutes of the eight fifteen, twenty twenty-three council meeting.
I'll make a motion.
We need, we need to change one thing, though. It says that Mayor Dennis Wagner called the meeting to order, but he was absent, so actually it was...
Was he last week? Was he?
Last month.
Yeah.
Putting it in the home?
He was asked, no, he was absent at the council meeting August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, yes, yeah. Good catch. Thank you.
I just caught that, and then I thought you'd catch it, so I didn't say anything.
You have a marked absent here, but...
Yeah, he's absent, but he also called the meeting to order, so you can't do both. Otherwise, I have no problem with the minutes.
I don't either. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from eight fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
We have a recommendation in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Recommendation carries to approve the claims list of August twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve? Or recommend approval, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Got a recommendation in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Recommendation carries. Review account balances and financial statements for general and water sewer funds as of eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
To recommend table that till next meeting?
I'll second.
We have a mo-, or, yeah, we have a motion in a second to table that till next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries to recommend approval of resolution twenty-three dash seven, proposed twenty twenty-three tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-four, and I believe that's at two hundred and sixty thousand. Cheryl, is that about what it's normally?
Um, yeah, last year we, it was two fifty. I've been working on the budget. We can put two sixty and then always drop it down.
Yeah, we can always drop it, yep.
Okay.
So we need a recommendation for the two sixty.
And I would second that.
We have a recommendation in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries or recommendation carries. Recommend the approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, amended twenty-three general fund?
Uh, backup one, sorry. We need to set a, talk about setting the date for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, to recommend, recommend proposing a date for public meeting for discussing twenty twenty-four general fund budget and twenty twenty-four tax levy, and that has to be between November and December?
Yeah, between, yeah, November and the end of December. So if you guys want to look into calendars and come up with a date next week, then I'll have to get that to, um, the county by the end of the month.
Okay, then why don't, yeah, let's recommend then that, we need a recommendation on that, or just a...
To tag, to table.
Yeah, just the recommendation to table that till next week, so we need a recommendation in a second?
And I'll second that.
And then everybody come up with a date that works, or a couple dates, and we'll figure it out?
Yeah.
Um, to recommend approval of twenty twenty-three oh eight, amended twenty twenty-three general budget.
So I just, I, what I did, we've had several, uh, revenue streams and expenses that we didn't plan on during the year, so just to sort of get it all about.
Do we want to read through all those, or how do you want to do that?
Well, we can revise if it's the ones that are in yellow.
Right, right.
Yeah, and just, um, I mean, if you want to read through them, you can. Um, I have them all posted.
Or it's just general knowledge for other people, but, um...
And it's, I post it back and online also too, but which, whichever way you want to do it.
I guess we can read through them real quick. There's quite a few of them, but, um, the delinquent taxes were budgeted at four thousand, and it's going to go up to five thousand. This is our receipts. Building permits and food truck permits, we budgeted five thousand, and it's going to be twelve hundred, or five hundred, and it's going to be twelve hundred. Uh, the trees for the control of the grant was...
We already have that budgeted, so I'll put that in the budget.
Yeah, and that was...
That's the Emerald Ash Ford.
That was for zero budget, and we're going to get five thousand dollars. How about the Minnesota Historical Society?
That was, uh, that was the grant that we received to get the condition assessment report from the building.
Right, because at, at the original budget, it was zero, now it's ten thousand.
Yeah, just we, because we didn't know.
And then we go down to disbursements. We had some, uh, wages and salaries for deputy clerk, uh, was zero, but it's at seven thousand three hundred.
Yeah, and what, what we had done previously when Tara was here, um, she only worked part-time, so most of her salary would come out of the water fund.
Right.
And so I'm taking part of Eden's salary out of the general fund.
Okay.
And then we had some office supplies. General was fifteen hundred, now it's going to be twenty one hundred.
Yeah.
And then there was some employee contributions to retirement for Pura NFICA went from four thousand three hundred to five thousand, and three thousand six hundred to four thousand three hundred.
That's because of adding Eden's salary into, into the work salary.
Professional service auditing and accounting was budgeted eight thousand five hundred. We're going to raise it to eleven thousand.
Yes.
Repair, maintenance, and supplies, equipment, which was snowplow, lawn mowers, and trailer, going to go from eight thousand to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, and, yeah, a lot of those items, the rec club contributed.
Right, no, I realize that a lot of this will be budgeted.
A lot of that is coming out, it's going to be rec club.
And then office supplies two two eight were at twenty, or two thousand one hundred, going to drop down to fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Um, wages and salaries, part-time employees was at three thousand five hundred, went to four thousand five hundred.
And that, that's our cleaning staff.
And then, um, capital outlay, buildings and structures, new maintenance shop, it's budgeted at eighty thousand, but right now it's at zero actual spending, so that's going to be on...
Yeah, we're not going to be able to get that this year.
So that'll be carried over for next year.
Yeah.
This is the question I have. Snow plowing services, we budgeted twenty-four thousand, and we're at thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
When we bought the plows, weren't we going to keep that down a little bit more, or does that just can't happen?
Well, this year, this past year, Nick was not able to fully use his...
So I would assume that in the future, we'll still have snow plowing lower because we have our own equipment.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the goal, for sure. And, you know, once we get the garage, it'll be even better because
Oh, yeah.
everything freezes up on the hydraulics, and it makes it...
Then you have to call in somebody to help.
Yeah, but the goal this year is to, to try to get the guys to do it all themselves without, but that doesn't take away from the county. The county still has to plant the roads.
Has to do some, yeah.
The county's going to do the roads, but the guys will do cleanup, and they'll do the liquor store here, and they'll do the alloys.
That'll help. And then there's a line of repairs and maintenance structures. That was the pavilion roof and weed whips was at two thousand one hundred and fifty, it's at nine thousand.
Yeah.
That's a rec club thing.
The rec club was attributed to that, and it looks very nice, and we thank, thank them.
Yes, it looks gorgeous.
And then we had other supplies that costing group FEMA was at nine thousand five hundred, and it went to twenty-four thousand seven hundred?
Um, yeah, we had some, we had some additional FEMA costs that...
They didn't?
Well, I, I didn't, I just didn't budget for the cost, because I didn't know what they were going to be.
Right.
Historical consultant, that was the community building assessment, is ten thousand five hundred.
And we got grant money for that.
Yeah, that was, that was ten thousand in the front end, yes.
So it's ten thousand five hundred, but we got a grant for fourteen thousand.
Ten.
Yep. And then the last one is a grant expense tree inventory, which is five thousand dollars that we have to add to the budget.
And that's a grant that we all...
So that's... They reimburse in cycles, right?
Right.
So we'll get reimbursed for that from the grant, but it's, I don't know if Jacob is ordering the...
And just to let the, the audience of citizens know that the, the new budget is five hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-four receipts, and expenses are five hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty, so the budget still balances that we have to adjust. So with that being said, we can have a recommendation to...
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a recommendation in a second to, um, revise the budget, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The next item is to recommend accepting Rainier Rec Club donation of six thousand dollars.
I'll make that recommendation.
We got a second?
I'll second.
We got a recommendation in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um...
If they wanted to contribute, um, towards renting the porta potties for the parks.
Right, I figured that, yeah.
Then they could, they could contribute certain things from their general fund that...
Because it's at the park.
Benefit the, benefit the community parks.
When I looked at the, when I looked at the general claims, I figured some of that was probably part of that.
Yeah.
Uh, we've got liquor store Jen.
Uh, what's your rate on...
Fanciest?
Rate on...
Jen, you spent a lot of money to make money, but I think it worked out. And in your opinion, did the seventeen hundred dollars for the band pay off?
I think so.
I would think so.
I think so.
From what I see.
Compliments of all.
I mean, you're out, as far as profits from this year, last year, almost exactly the same, but you brought in, and it's getting people excited, so I think it's great.
Well, it helps too, probably, because we're starting almost a tradition, so when you do that, people get an expectation, and then you get that return feeling, people coming back, so I think that's great, that you're creating repetition of these fancy, fancier things happening, so people like do come back, they're going to come back home for one weekend, and I've been part of that prob...
Oh, absolutely.
It's around Rainier Days, right? So...
No, that's a good thing.
And it's so crazy how similar this is. That is so weird, how similar that is.
So now you got the pig rolls coming up?
Yes.
Like in three days or four days?
Do you have the pig rolls?
It's ready to pick up, and then we get up to the writing.
Isn't that one of those ones where you have to butcher?
Nope. I didn't get my license for that.
Any other questions for Jen?
Nope, just keep up with the turn.
How did the new outdoor bar work over so far?
Should let you know this weekend.
Yeah, it worked really swift for Rainier Days.
Yeah, we got it moved to the back.
Um, yes, we moved it back. Pig rolls isn't way as large as Rainier Days, so we just put it back there. And that's where a lot of people are going to be congregating anyways.
I think it's better back there.
Well, yeah, that would have been...
That, that's going to be its permanent home back there?
It's somewhere back there per se. We don't know for sure. We just got it out of the way.
Okay.
Anything for us?
Uh, heads up that one of our beer coolers wasn't functioning properly, but I don't know if we just keep...
That was part of our wish list, to get a new one, and, uh...
Yeah.
Maybe it's time to get some quotes or do whatever.
Do you have quotes for that yet?
Yeah, Derek, the one that's been fixing it for us, he can, he's thought of a few, but he thinks it was thermostat to replace that. Um, it's just not keeping up.
Okay.
So it's not like the walk-in one, it's the one in the bar.
I mean, do we...
Buy one?
Buy one?
Yeah.
Do we, we should do that?
There's no more saying.
I think if we're going to do that, though, would it not be smart just to buy both of them?
Might as well.
Because that little one is older than the...
Might as well bite the bullet and get them both taken care of.
Maybe we can get a better deal if you buy two.
Maybe, like on Derek's, that too.
I doubt it, but good try.
Buy one, get one for you?
Buy one for Tuesday.
I don't know. You can ask.
Do we need to make a motion for that, or is that just something we do?
I think we already gave her the...
Just make them aware, go ahead, price it out.
Price it out and let us know.
I know Derek said he wasn't around this week, he had too much going on, but he, he has been calling every day to ask if I can get it into a certain town, then... Have you ever seen a girl in the local?
No, there's like maybe one person I know that likes to walk beer.
Yeah.
You won't know who that is.
Yeah.
That's it, Jen. Have fun this weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yes.
Um, the, uh, the public works update will be postponed till next meeting, because he is out with the, uh, water people. They're doing finally the graphs where the water stuff is and everything, so he won't be here tonight.
They're mapping our water stuff?
Yes, they finally, after two years, they're finally...
They came to my house, and they couldn't find, uh, my water shut-off for the property across the street, or for Timmy's Lassars. They were going up and down the yard with these yellow sticks, and I went out there and said, "Hey, who going?" Two blind guys trying to... He says, "Well, we're trying to find the water shut-offs," you know? I says, "Well, mine, we have a big trailer there, because we're moving, and it's in the middle of my driveway, so it's underneath the trailer." He had to crawl down and then hand some days and physically observe the thing, and then the others over at Timmy's, it's in the woods, and it's sticking up about this high, and we crashed around there, but we would have never followed these at all, Mr. Wilcox, thank you.
Awesome, that's good.
Okay, we're going to review the draft ordinance one sixty-two, uh, regulating short-term rental units. Uh, Cheryl recommends that we go through that and probably not even bring it up next week, maybe the following month. She'd like to have this finalized before the end of December.
I mean, I, I like how it is that it stands now, unless, unless one or somebody, you know, when Mayor Wagner can hopefully be, be here next, next week, to read through this and find, and, you know, compare it with what else is being done in small communities. I, I really like the way that all this is laid out.
When I read it, I did too.
I think it's what Rainier needs. I think it's fair, and I think it locks the balance appropriately between maintaining community values and also encouraging tourism. So for the audience that doesn't know, this regulating short-term rental units is just a way for short-term rental units, so those are stays under thirty days, have to register with the city and obtain a permit, so that we know who's running these in our community, and if they don't physically live here, they have to have a representative that is available twenty-four hours a day. This also includes, um, a process to go through, there ends up being issued with a short-term rental, that maybe they have routing visitors. There's a, a way for residents to bring their complaints and a process to follow to find out whether their permit should be pulled or not. This also does something that I believe is very, very important, where it caps it at five percent of our households. Meaning, when we had our housing study done in two thousand nineteen, one of the things that Rainier has going for is our affordable housing stock. Um, and we're not the only community here trying to cap short-term rental units, and that is because what happens is you take a home that's maybe worth a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's a very easy buy-in for anyone to buy and use as an investment property for short-term rentals, and that's great. We don't behoove anybody to do that. However, if you have enough of those, you remove your affordable long-term housing for people who live and work in the community. And so we, as we've, uh, we're going to cap it at five percent as of the, uh, two thousand, was it two thousand twenty cents? It was. I think we figured that to be about between like eleven and thirteen permits.
For all of Rainier?
For all of Rainier.
Well, there are already that many.
No, there's, there's not, there's not, there's not.
Short-term rentals?
Short-term rentals, there's not. And that's per parcel. Now, if you have a list that you think that we don't, you, if you know someone's doing it, and it's listed somewhere, and they're actually doing this as a business...
That's knowing it.
You know, we need to, we need to know if this gets voted as an ordinance, um, but the permits that are allowed right now enable everyone who's currently running a, a short-term rental to continue to do that, as well as providing some that are not used at this point.
So are you saying short-term rentals are under thirty days?
Under thirty days.
Under thirty days.
So why aren't they over thirty days, or thirty-one days, or, or six weeks?
That's just the standard line that they decided to draw, and that's across the board in all these different states and small communities. Third, under thirty days is what is considered a short-term rental stay. Anything over that is considered long-term, and that is the type of thing that we want in our community, which is longer-term stays.
Because they're staying and buying.
Long-term rental housing. So if you were to come and work for three months, and you wanted to rent for someone for three months, and you're a rotation medical provider, like, we, we want that in the community, but short-term rental stays brings a lot more of a transient population, and, you know, it doesn't provide the long-term housing instability that a community needs that, you know, we may not have.
What the parking, the parking that goes along.
It's in the sound area, you have to have parking.
Yeah, so there are...
And garbage and...
Listen for requirements of what you have to do, if you're going to do this, these are the things you have to submit to the city office to show that you are prepared and you really have the information that we need.
Is that the new ordinance proposal?
It's going to be.
This is proposed, it's a crack.
Why don't we, um, why don't we do this and make it, um...
I just want to...
Make our goal to make sure we have it done by the end of October, because Cheryl would like to post it November, December.
Absolutely.
And just so we all can read through it a little bit more and...
Yes, and as long as it just doesn't get lost, I can automatically add it.
I, I, I think by the, the council meeting in October, we should yay or nay it, and I think it's, that's, just so we do it right, and everybody's comfortable with it.
And I just wanted to get, put some of that information out there for you guys, so, because I believe strongly in this. Um, I think like...
I do too.
With Rainier, there's a specific balance that we have to come to between community values in conjunction with tourism, and we need to be proactive rather than reactive, and this is never, you know, if this becomes an ordinance, you know, this, this can change, but it's just, I think it's a good start for trying to, you know, Rainier has a history of being a working-class neighborhood, and this maintains making it more accessible and continues to make it accessible for somebody who wants to like...
Well, we, we have rented probably fifteen places for a month, or, through various spots in the United States. And usually, if you rent for three days, or a month, or, or, then you don't have to pay a tax on that.
Right.
A city tax or a state tax.
The C V B.
Airbnb, if they're registered under them, they have their own, just for using the service.
And also the other thing in here is making sure that people who are doing this comply with, there's like a three percent city tax, and...
Lodging tax.
Lodging tax. Historically, not everyone has participated in that. This is a way to make sure that they're doing that. And again, feedback is, we want the feedback, and there's a reason why we're doing this, and if I, I'll talk to anybody who has questions or anybody on the council, but yes, it's, and I guess we're going to visit again in October.
Well, we can even talk about it next week, but I think by the, the actual council meeting in October, we should vote, so Cheryl can get the stuff in order and...
Whatever's needed for the week.
Because you want to start up and running in January, right?
Aren't there all...
And this is going to be a yearly renewal too.
So what, my question is, you said that most people that dwell with their...
Whatever the numbers end up being at, what, what, why are they...
I mean, I think currently, just in old Rainier, excluding the one along the city beach road, what is it, beach road? There are currently six or seven already.
Well, not all of those qualify, I, I don't know which ones you're talking about, but, and you can come into the city and discuss that with Cheryl, but not all of them qualify as short-term rentals. And all of the stuff that is in here...
They have to qualify.
They rent for short-term, they're short-term renters.
It's different if you're not, if you're not a hotel or a resort.
Right.
So, and if you know some, like, I, all I know is what I see on VRBO and what I see on, um...
Airbnb.
Airbnb, so if people are doing it not to those means, like, they have to, they think, you know...
Is the Conde Natale or, or...
Uh, not Conde Natale.
They're talking about it, they're talking about it right now.
I heard, I saw them. But anyways, so there's, there's...
But we're going to limit it to eleven.
Good.
And that is what we're pursuing. Again, feedback, we all want to see back, and, and you can certainly talk to your...
No, I can name seven.
That's why I wanted to wait till October, just, we can talk about it next time, and then two more times in October.
Because this will be the end of, end of visiting this topic, it's just, this is, we're breaking the surface with this.
Well, I'm very glad about it, because, you know, being old and waking up to fireworks at twelve, one o'clock is...
That's part of the...
It's disturbing, yeah.
And that's in, that's in ordinance, so, we're trying to be proactive and so...
I mean, I have no problem for radio days, or for the first of July or the fourth of July, but, you know, when, when they keep on going every night, and they're going on down the lake.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't matter if they're on the river or the lake.
You can hear, you can hear it.
You can hear the echo, yeah.
So...
That's what we'll do then.
Okay.
But I'm going to recommend I should table one?
I will make a recommendation to table until what, next week, are we deciding?
Yeah, we'll just keep tabling it, but we can even talk about it each time and see where everybody's at.
Okay, so then I make a recommendation to table, um, ordinance number one sixty-two, the draft, um, until next week.
And are the people who rent aware of this ordinance?
I mean, they will.
They will.
They will. That's, that's why we're giving them a couple months to catch up on here. So we had a, we had a, um, a recommendation in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Recommendation carries, um, last week, um, we met with the, uh, Senate Capital Investment Committee talking about the public works maintenance shop that we'd like to build over, um, there was, uh, the, the whole committee showed up. It was, it was a nice little quick meeting, um...
Presentation.
Yeah, it was a presentation that, uh, Jen led the presentation, told them what our goals were, to get the thing over there, and we even said that we'd like to use the garage, maybe turn it into more of an office, and... So it was a, it was a very good meeting. I mean, Jen, if you want to talk about it for a second, or Cheryl, but it was really a good meeting.
Yeah, I mean, there literally was a charter bus that showed up with, uh, a bunch of representatives and their staff that are part of this capital investment committee, and they gave the chance to give a spiel on, you know, why, you know, we're asking for some money to help build this maintenance shop that we would really like, and it's a, it's something that requires us to have some money in projects, kind of, and we have prepared for that, so we're in a really good position that if they end up picking us, it would really help us get something that our maintenance and our public works department really, really need, and, and so they were, you know, this, this is farther down, I guess, this is the next, this is connected to the next item. So we're just really hopeful, because I think it would be really great. It'll enable us, as Nick, our public works, Nick Hagan has said is...
Nick was here.
If we had, Nick was here, and he helped with that, a little bit with that presentation, is it's going to hopefully enable us to maintain our equipment and do things in a way that we don't have to farm so much of the workout. So, and maybe cut costs, we will, that's what we aim to do. You never know if that's going to happen, but that's what we aim to do, but it is a need, which is not enough, that half stall garage is not enough, so...
So then the next round, I guess, is going to be...
Hold on, she has, she has a question.
Where will we be?
The, there, the city has a few lot options, but what we're kind of looking at is the lot that we have behind the Rainier Roost. As it is away from a residential area, the only thing that would prevent us from doing that...
Yeah, it'd be perfect over there.
Is if some sort of like study or soil sample, or whatever it is that we have to do to build comes back, is not a good place to do that, and we would have to find a new spot, but for right now, it's, it would be down that, that road past Big Bid, and it's back in that area. Yes, so, sorry.
No, that's fine, and then, um, now the, the House of Representatives want to have a meeting, but Cheryl, is that going to be, not here?
No, that's in Virginia.
So they're just meeting with everybody, or the whole Rainier, whatever.
The Senate's not a committee, and the House has a committee, so we'll have to...
I won't be able to be there, I'll be on vacation.
With a potty.
One representative, anyway.
Somebody get out to, to take the presentation, so...
We have to, like, visit somewhere.
And that's going to, that's going to be on September twenty-seventh at five forty-five.
And what is that for?
That's the House of Representatives now. The Senate came last week or whatever. Now the House of Representatives is just going to meet everybody down on the range to talk about your project, so we'll have somebody down there to pluff their feathers, I guess.
No, well, I don't, I mean, I, I don't, it would be who's involved in this capital investment, right?
Yeah, they're on the other committee here.
Yeah. It's basically to present our case in front of them, for them to consider this. It's like a, it's a, it's a process. It's like a, it's a, it's a process they need to go through.
Right.
So, yeah.
And the final thing on the agenda here is the tree board meeting. That's gonna be tomorrow, Cheryl?
Yes.
So what's all that include?
I mean, I can talk about it. So, um, this has to do with the Emerald Ash Core, the maintaining of that grant. Um, so we're just getting together to discuss, um, the status, what is going to be, it would be done this fall, such as the tree removal and going forward back.
Planting.
They have some removals in the park that the sick, the sick, um, not from Emerald Ash Core. They're just trees we need to remove to make room or.
Some of them are dead.
Yes, and we also may need to discuss potentially, you know, we don't know if we'll be able to get what we need from somebody in town. It's, people are so busy and so it's basically the logistics of maintaining the length, of, of meeting the expectations of the grant language.
Right, right.
And in time fashion. So, yeah, that's what that's about.
Then we're at open forum.
Open forum. Of course I have a question about the marina and public. I, I have a question.
One at a time. Yes, they will be, but we haven't heard, have we even heard, Cheryl, do they have the final plans yet or some plans? Soon as we get the plans, we'll have a public meeting.
Well, they're going, they're still per, in permitting process.
Right.
There's no reason to have a meeting right now.
It's supposed to be sometime, maybe October, November, but we definitely will have, not even later than that.
Well, I mean, there's no, there's no plan yet.
They allotted, was it six months for permitting?
It'll be until next year.
But we will have a public meeting.
You see, one of the problems I see is that when you have a resident of Rainier that's been here for, say, fifty-some years and he stops me to ask me where it is that this three-point-five million-dollar marina is gonna be. Is it going to be down there by the Lassard property? Or is it going to be out of the river?
Or?
Or never, it would be on the lake. And he's lived here for, well, let's say sixty years. That would be your name, okay?
I know who you're talking about, yeah.
I know. So, I mean, you know, there really is not good information about what's going on.
I mean, I, I have done my best to share any updates that, that I have on my public council page. And anytime I hear any update, I, my wish is for everybody to know what's going on.
Yeah, right now we don't have an update.
Unfortunately.
But we know, we don't.
Not everybody.
However.
But we will have public meetings.
People, you go to the meeting between one and four to speak to the thick tank. They don't.
Oh, yeah, no, that's.
That's the new council meeting.
Now you know why my wife retired.
What's happening with CN, with the marina, with everything. That's where you.
So we have no public meeting right now.
But we will have, yes.
Not scheduled.
It will be unfortunate. It occurs when the snowbirds are gone, but that's the way it is.
And who knows? It might be April before it is.
Again, there's so much we don't know because this is uncharted territory and you know how I feel about everything. So as soon as I, anything is, I, the text me, you know, I, I share with the community at large, if I can.
Well, I did recheck my documents, okay? Because I made a mistake and said there were sixteen, um, sites for households. And however, I was wrong. There are eighteen protected sites and eight for other roads. Okay, so that's the way the proposal reads. When it started operating for households and then the line was changed.
Well, I mean, as, as I made clear, I had issues with the narrative from the beginning, but when I came in, it gets hard to change that. And that's why I asked Grant Haushild regarding this.
We can make change.
How close to the letter of the law is this from the bonding money that we get?
Said it's not.
We could not answer that question, but we need to continue to pursue that.
That was in the detail.
Yes.
Yes.
We both.
We can, there can be changes.
And some of the money was from the LCCMR, which says right there that you have to go back and redo it through them. And then the bonding bill probably has to go back too somehow.
I don't think he said it had to go back, but there was some wiggle room.
Change order.
Yeah, change orders.
Because some of that could be, some of that could be not allowed simply because of the permitting. And the permitting can say, well, you can only.
We don't want any sewer.
You can only build it this long.
No gas.
Yeah. So there's just so much unknowable. So we have to see what the permitting.
Not only that, but to look at it, with that, uh, estimation of what that dock was gonna cost is, uh, what, three?
That's five.
Five years ago? The costs have gone up tremendously. So that five, whatever, three-point-five million today is not.
You'll have to scale back. That's what he said.
We get the plans, then we go through and start marking on stuff.
Yeah, he said then you can start adjusting, cause it would be nice to have a period.
The two point, you requested two-point-one, then it went to three-point-five.
Yes, well, and then if you wanted to build the dock that we originally wanted to build, it would be more than three-point-five million dollars in today's money. So if we're gonna keep the three-point-five million, the call we do is just keep cutting back.
I, I, my goal is that once we get information back from permitting is when the public meeting needs to happen.
And then we'll see what it is.
So I just have one other question. There is my daughter, who was a permanent resident of Canada, British Columbia, said, so have the tribes been involved in this at all? And I said, no.
It's city, it's a city property.
A city property.
I don't, you're on international waters.
Not over here though. Not on, that's, American waters there.
Well, it might be, but American waters, Canadian waters.
And therein lies the argument. I said, and therein lies the argument. John, you.
Um, now are we still in the public conference?
Yep, yep, yep.
Am I allowed to go conference?
Yep. Is it his turn now?
Yeah, it's his turn.
So now, when is the, have you guys taken up this idea of all the dark skies? It's a big deal.
The what?
Dark.
The dark skies, ordinance, support, the planning and all of that stuff. And I think we would be shipping starting into some of that planning, cause we're close to, I think, dark skies.
Right, right.
And, uh, and it's what terrorists would like. I mean, they like it. I don't, there's a lot of people that have not seen the dark skies. And your kids.
Absolutely.
How many, you know, and you're saying there are cops and tires and that, but, uh, there's a lot of people that have looked at that.
Well, we're constantly evaluating ways to maintain dark skies. And I know Dennis is pushing for some, some project with the county one day and that will incorporate specific lighting that should work with that, people. But again, that's in the future, so there's nothing we can do.
Even the city of International Hall has taken that up. Some of the new projects that design have to look into their.
So like the pier is the same way. If that happens, then there's the lighting that is for dark skies. There's just.
I would like to see a blowdown, um, that exists in lighting. And I know they put the LED stuff in. I don't know if that's dark skies compliant or not, but it's, I don't think, I mean, it's pretty bright. There are a lot of them. I mean, there's way too many, I think.
And then sometimes certain spots, you have to have a certain level of brightness, you know, if it's a, a boat launch or landing. Unfortunately, the thing that we have to fight with here in Rainier is literally the train bridge right there. And we can't ask them to tone down their lights, even though their lights are obnoxiously brave. Especially when they have all the technology they have, why do they need a bright light?
Exactly. Why can't they turn on?
And maybe that will change with the project that they have going on will happen, but right now they will, they won't work with that.
I doubt it.
I doubt it.
Yeah.
They have no special ordinances, you know, the unions.
We will definitely keep an eye on that though, John. Cause I believe that too. I think it's nice to, I can sit out at my house and still see the, the lights and stuff, the, or Borealis and all that kinda stuff.
I just have one suggestion to me pertaining to the council is that, uh, um, my suggestion is that let's do the employee evaluations before the end of the year, because January, February, March, we're always, most of us are all gone on vacation then. So we are always coming back to April or whatever to do it. And then we have this go back to January. Then we got this big payday where everybody gets back pay for three or four months, which, uh, to me is not taking the money out of the correct budget year for it. So I would like to suggest that we do employee evaluations.
Sometime in November.
Before the end of the year, uh, after.
Or December. I, I agree with you. I think that's, instead of waiting till April and then you're halfway almost through the year.
Yeah.
So let's figure that out. There, again, everybody think about a date that would work for them. Maybe you wanna do it in December, maybe after Thanksgiving. Probably after Thanksgiving.
Probably better to do like after Thanksgiving and like early December.
Yeah.
Early December, yes.
Yeah, I would say no later than the, the, the council meeting in December or even before that. So let's think about that for the next, next week. Maybe we can come up with some ideas, cause we also have to slip the budget in there, so.
And we will do that next week. We'll pick a date next week.
All right. Any other stuff out in public?
I just have a question. How the rec club is doing? Are they doing great? They're giving another six thousand dollars this month, so.
Everything's good. October, probably October, November, I think we're closed on jack season. Um, maybe September, we shut down changing, or we're changing as a side, we can shut that down, so. We're back to just the outside of the baby. We got the rock this time. We're meeting on Friday too, um, a couple of years ago, we bought a container back where we were gonna talk about the maintenance shop. So we're slowly getting all the stuff out of the basement, cause it's quite dangerous how they hold that stuff in that basement. So we keep moving. So we're gonna clean that out, make some armor for Cheryl and eat it for their stuff down there, so we're getting the basement. The carpet.
Yeah, just go walk down the stairs.
The stairs are like circular. It's like, and they're, I mean.
It's the old jail.
We're, yeah, and we're gonna get out of the jail, so everything's all on the posse. Anything for us, everything's open.
Jay, the car probably is wonderful. You guys can hear it.
Yeah, that looks great.
It was, um, my two grandkids stay with us on Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday. Right now, tonight, there must have been fifteen kids, cause there's some over here that live over this way and they all meet. Now they all meet, cause they know they're getting out the bus and blah blah. So it's kinda neat to watch it. It's, yeah, it's awesome.
Nice to see activity over here.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.